The car you got, you gotta get bounced from the end. We had to move your in one. Per chata. Chata, chata, chata change.
Good evening. I'd like to get the meeting of the Housing Subcommittee started. It's 5:30 on August 13, 2024. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Chairman Yem.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Three present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'd like to welcome everyone who is in the chamber and also individual resident who watched it at home. This is the Housing Subcommittee, and we will be talking about the housing trust that was proposed in the motion by Counselor Noon. We have in the chamber CFO Connor Baldwin, and I would like to ask him to introduce everybody else who are here in the chamber. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. As you mentioned, my name is Connor Baldwin. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the city. Joining me this evening, to my right, is Mr. Austin Ball, the city's Deputy CFO, and then Giovanni Baez-Rose, the Assistant City Manager for Planning. This evening, we've prepared a presentation for the Subcommittee. At your direction, we'd be happy to move forward.
Right. Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. So, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, back on April the 9th, we had a meeting where we started to discuss the logistics of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I'll very quickly recap for the Subcommittee and for the viewing public some of the items we shared and discussed at that meeting. So, in reference to the city's master plan, Lowell Forward, there are a number of housing goals that have been created and sourced from the community as goals for the city looking forward, one of which is to produce 800 units of new affordable housing by 2040. So you can see in the graphic on the screen, there are a number of sort of high-level goals that we're trying to achieve. We see the creation of an Affordable Housing Trust as means to that end. And so, we'll kind of talk a little bit about the logistics of setting it up. So, moving forward, also in the Subcommittee, we talked about a little bit of the legal and financial framework for an Affordable Housing Trust. So, the statutory authority for the trust is in the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 55(c). It does require a vote of the City Council to establish a trust. We would then also by vote of the City Council and after a public hearing, establish an ordinance to set up the trust, which would include things such as the logistics of the trust, including membership. So there would be a Board of Trustees. Once the trust is established, there would be a legal document, a declaration of trust, that would be recorded with the Registry of Deeds. And then, we would need to set up a budget and talk about funding sources. This is something we touched on at the last meeting, but as recap, some of those areas of funding or sources of funding would be, we have allocated a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, that we would be able to transfer into the trust, that we could later use to finance some of the, you know, either creation of affordable housing or some of the other eligible uses under the trust. There could be each year, an allocation of the Community Preservation Act funding. As we know, the Community Preservation Act must be used for certain categorical expenses. Affordable housing is one of them, parks and open space being another, historic preservation, etc. So those are a few of the funding sources. Another one, which we would like to put forward as a more sustainable funding source, being a linkage ordinance. And what that means is there would be an ordinance in the city, the framework for which we've been working with the Law Department to start to frame out, that would put a fee on developers. When they come to the city to create developments, they would pay a fee per square footage into the trust. Now, this is something that most other communities with an Affordable Housing Trust have as a funding source for the trust. Sometimes, at the discretion of the land use boards, in lieu of some of the requirements, say, for example, parking requirements, they could offer relief to the applicant, but in lieu of the relief, they would make a payment into the Affordable Housing Trust. So those are options that some other communities have used. The graphic on the screen shows the number. You can see the note at the M-A-H-T means Mass Affordable Housing Trust. So that designates how many communities in Massachusetts? 136 of the total. How many have used the statutory pathway to create a trust? 125 of them. There are 11 who have created a trust, but through other methods, those meaning special legislation. There are some communities that have had a trust predating the establishment of Chapter 44, Section 55(c), which was established in 2005. And so, some communities have had a trust longer than that. They created it through special legislation in most cases, some like Cambridge and others. So, Mr. Ball, if you could advance the slide. So on the left side, it talks in a little bit more detail about the funding sources. ARPA, the Community Preservation Fund, as I mentioned. 10% of the annual receipts from the Community Preservation Fund is about $95,000. Some other communities use donations from developers or from, if they have an inclusionary zoning ordinance, that could provide funding for the trust. And then I mentioned the linkage ordinance. So, the chart on the screen outlines the history of, in the city of Somerville, their linkage ordinance, which started in 1990. So from the years of 1990 to 2013, their rate of the linkage was $3.91 per square foot. That has increased over time up to $22.91. Per gross, I'm sorry, for the city of Somerville. What we have started to put together in our ordinance would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $12.50 per 25,000 gross square feet for commercial space, and then $10 per 25,000 gross square feet of residential space. That is an item for discussion by the Subcommittee and the full council, but that would be our proposal for the linkage ordinance. So at the last Subcommittee, there were some questions that came about as to the city's progress in establishing affordable housing and, you know, where we've been, where we need to go. So based on, you can see on the slide on the screen, at least 2,502 units are needed based on growth projections, particularly units affordable to lower income or filling an untapped middle-income market. We need 3,203 additional units by the year 2040 to keep up with the demand and to maintain a desirable vacancy rate. These are data points that were taken from the Lowell Forward Master Plan, compiled by our consultants and discussed at length with the community through the master planning process. The chart on the screen just sort of outlines, you know, those targets over the years 2030, 2040, 2050. And so in order to keep pace, we, as I mentioned in the beginning, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund will be an avenue to help us meet the demand of housing in the future for the city of Lowell. So some additional questions that were raised. These are some responses to those questions as to how much affordable housing has been created over the last five years. You can see the chart on the right-hand side of the screen. In the year 2024, there were 51 units of affordable housing created. That was a good number compared to prior years. The year prior, 2023, there were seven units. 2022, there were 26 units going backwards. And so, over the last, one, two, three, four, five, six years, there were 207 units of affordable housing created in the city of Lowell. Some other additional data points. 16,825 households are cost-burdened, which is a, this is a topic that is highlighted with some significance in the master plan, this idea of being cost-burdened, paying in excess of what would be the recommended amount of your monthly income towards rent. So 8,023 of those are paying more than half of their income on housing. This data point just sort of underscores the need for more affordable housing in Lowell. And so, I've run through this very quick, but this is sort of the, we spent a lot of time on this at the last Subcommittee. So, the next steps to get to the establishment are as follows. And so they're laid out on the screen here. But the timeline that we're looking at would be, today is August 13th. We're having the Subcommittee meeting to discuss some of the answers to the questions that were raised, but also some more of the logistics. We would look for the Housing Subcommittee to make a recommendation to the full council. Hopefully this evening, if the Mr. Chairman and your colleagues were so inclined, to request the city manager to have the Law Department prepare the necessary votes and ordinance to establish the trust. That will be three major votes, one being a vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 55(c). Pursuant to the rules of the City Council, adoption of statutes requires a public hearing. So we would bring that forward at the next meeting, August 27th, along with two ordinances. So the first ordinance would be the establishment of the trust. That would outline all of the details and logistics of the trust, the number of members for the Board of Trustees, the uses of the funds. And these are all somewhat standard, and there's a template for this that we can rely on for other communities that have the trust. And then we would bring forward the ordinance for the linkage fee. That would establish this fee. It would establish the fee as a funding source for the trust. And those would be the three major votes that we would look for a recommendation from the Housing Subcommittee this evening. Once those come back for a first reading, they will get referred to a public hearing. And then on September the 10th, hypothetically on this timeline, we would have a public hearing where we would have appointment of the board members. We would also have the two ordinances and the public hearing to accept the provisions of the general laws. Assuming that is approved by the City Council, then the Board of Trustees can get to work. We would have an allocation of the ARPA funding to the trust, which would be their initial seed funding, so they could get right to work. And then they would need to work together, the Board of Trustees, that is, to compile with the Law Department the declaration of trust, record that with the Registry of Deeds, and then the committee can begin its work, start to get applications from developers, from residents, if there's going to be a rental assistance component to the trust, and there are other work. So, that is the presentation of the update on the Affordable Housing Trust. And thank you very much for your attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Subcommittee may have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Before we go on, I'd like to recognize Counselor Rita Mercier, who is in the chamber, along with Counselor Erica Cheers and Counselor Corey Balancha as well. Any question from the members? Ms. Noon, Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's very exciting, you know? And there's no doubt this is one of many ways to get to build more housing. It's unusual to have a CFO leading the charge, but I'm happy to have you doing that. As always, similar to CPA, this is one way to help support and build more housing. As you indicated at your presentation around the request for this committee to refer this matter to the Law Department for vote and ordinance. When you're talking about the ordinance for, to establish the linkage fee, are you going to somewhat follow along the line with some will and Cambridge as to how they do that in term of how much per square feet?
Thank you, Counselor, yes. We are following a template based on Cambridge and Somerville. And as we mentioned at the last Subcommittee, the Assistant City Manager, Mr. Ball, and I have had a number of calls over the last several months now with other communities. So they have given us recommendations based on their experience, on what has worked, what has not worked. And so we've taken that all in, the good and the bad. And so we have taken that in drafting the linkage ordinance. And we think we have a draft now, which is nearly in its final form, that reflects what is best suited for Lowell. But it is based on those other communities. A lot of the language and the framework is very much in line with what they have in those communities.
Is that the same with the trust ordinance?
That's exactly right, Counselor.
Would this come back before the council? It's come back, Law Department draft it, and then we're going to have a public hearing on it, and then we got to see it, right?
Yes. So the council will see the form of the ordinance. It could be as soon as August 27th. And then, at that point, it would get referred to a public hearing. There would be time to hear from the public at that point, at the public hearing or before. But there will be plenty of time to see what's in the details.
I'm also happy that the managers set aside the ARPA money for the seed for this. Did you know how much? How, what's the amount here?
I hesitate to use an exact number because we're nearing the 12/31/24 deadline, and there's a lot of moving pieces. But we do have a number that is in the millions, that is earmarked towards this purpose. The city of Worcester did something very similar and used their ARPA funding as a seed. They had an existing Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but it will be in the millions.
You also mentioned CPA funding as well, right? So CPA funding, meaning that every year, the CPA trustee or committee will vote to all those three or four category in term of giving money to. And with that vote, with that money, that going to come to the Affordable Housing Trust trustee, and that trustee then will use that money to, along with the ARPA, along with the linkage fee, to do what in term of helping build more housing? Is that correct?
That is correct. It would be subject to appropriation by the Community Preservation Committee and the council as well. But we would make a recommendation to the committee that they, you know, unless there are projects which are much more compelling or time-sensitive, that they allocate that 10% each year into the trust. So it's always there for them as an option.
Have you communicated with this? Have you communicated with the CPA trustee or committee about the building of this Affordable Housing Trust? And how do they feel about it?
Well, Ms. Baez-Rose is a member, and yes, has. And it's worth noting that 10% is the minimum, but the committee could allocate more. And if there is a, in the hypothetical event that there is a large match from the state, which is, you know, dependent on the number of transfer, sales, property sales in the state, there could be an additional amount. But I'll let Ms. Baez-Rose comment.
Yeah, so the conversation about the potential creation of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund is something that has come up. As Mr. Baldwin mentioned, the 10% is the minimum. I think it was Cambridge that allocate, you know, they've made a decision in their CPC to allocate a significantly larger percentage. And so it is something that the group can vote on annually. One of the mechanisms by how that works essentially is that they would vote to send their kind of pool of affordable housing money to the trust fund, and then all applications, instead of going to the CPC, would go to this trust fund for housing. So the Community Preservation Council would still be responsible for reviewing applications relative to the open space and historic preservation funds and projects. But essentially, by sending the money to the trust fund, we would also send the review of those housing applications to the trust fund as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for calling this meeting, and thank you to CFO and your team for being here to make the presentation. I have a series of questions. Some are disconnected and some just for verification. We'll start with the easy one first. As Counselor Noon was alluding to in terms of, for the linkage, in terms of what the cities will plan to charge per square foot, you mentioned like it was $12 per square foot?
For commercial.
For commercial.
And then $10 for residential.
Okay, $10 and $12. And the example that you give here for the city of Somerville, they start off, as you mentioned, from $3.91 all the way to right now, propose of $22.91. And I think you said you mentioned you're looking at the model from Cambridge to pick out these numbers. How, you know, if we were to compare to, because we're starting right now, we're not starting back to 1990 with only $3.91. Do you think like $10 and $12 is a competitive value? Because if you just ask me to just look at a graph only, it seems low for a city like Lowell, for all the development that we're trying to do and the volume of interest from developers. And as you know, we're limited in real estate land. So I'm pretty sure there's got to be a lot of concessions, a lot of negotiations. You know, the purpose of linkage is like in lieu of, right? They're able not to get some permit for something, so they pay fees. So it's $10 and $12. It seems like we're, you know, when Somerville was charging $10, $12 was back in 2020. So are we being competitive enough?
So I think that's a very, very good question, Counselor. And I guess I would respond that the seed funding from ARPA will provide a significant base balance for the trust whereby we can, you know, because this will be new for the city of Lowell, we'll need to establish the Board of Trustees. And then they will start to consider projects. And within the framework of the ordinance to establish the trust and then to establish this fee, as it's in its draft form now, there is a provision for an increase to the linkage fee that would need to come back to the council for a vote. But to your point, Counselor, if we find that the revenue generated from the linkage fee is not sufficient to maintain some, or rather to sustain what we find to be hopefully a successful program and is making headway in building and maintaining the stock of affordable housing, then I think it will be worth revisiting at that point. But I guess my argument would be that this is a sort of a baseline, so as not to burden, overly burden development, so that we can still encourage developers to come in, but that we may need to revisit this. And there is a component of the ordinance to do so. There's a mechanism to revisit that, as well as a built-in cost of, not cost of living, Consumer Price Index increase. So it's not a lot, but each year pursuant to the ordinance, it would increase by, according to the Consumer Price Index. But if we find that to be insufficient to maintain the level of service, we could come back to the council with an adjustment.
Wonderful. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I have a couple more questions.
If, before we go on, may I ask you, Mr. Baldwin, to introduce the other two members of the staff who are here?
Yeah, so I was going to introduce that. So we are also joined in the chamber today by Deputy Director of the Planning Department, Camilo Espatia, and Urban Renewal Project Manager Jorge Martinez, who will join us and walk through some information in the second part of the agenda today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, chamber. Glad you could join, join the meeting. So, yeah, this is a good proposal, good presentation you're doing. I'm here really just to ask questions for verification and clarify a lot of information, like even myself, when I listen to presentations, I just want to understand it better. I'm sure like the audience out there, there were some clarifications on the presentation you made either. So I am in full support of your proposal, but just want to make sure that, you know, we cross the Ts, dot the Is, and make sure they're on the same page. And in your answer to the linkage fees, you mentioned ARPA. And earlier, again, alluded by Counselor Noon also in terms of how much money in ARPA that the city is planning to allocate to. As you know, when you allocate a certain amount of number from one pool to the next, there's some other areas that will get less funding and so forth. So I think before that we can, you know, have a, bring up to the full body the Law Department to write up the, for the public hearing, I also would like to know, you know, what is the amount of ARPA money that you, the CFO and the city, are planning to put into this, into this trust? So that way, it's not, it's not going to be, you know, leave open. It's like, you know, it could be in the millions, you know, to me, in the millions, could be 2 millions or 10 millions. So, you know, I'd like to know, you know, what is your proposal of the value of money coming from ARPA? That being said, you know, there's been some exciting news in the past few weeks about the housing bill coming from Boston, about $5 billion that will be dedicated to housing development of some sort. Will there be any type of money or program or funding or grants that we can get from the housing bill that could be utilized to put into this housing trust?
So I know that the housing bill that passed includes an expansion and an increase in funds for a number of state affordable housing programs. The State Affordable Housing Trust usually gets a significant allotment of money. I think there was more put in. A lot of the state home funds, low-income housing tax credit programs that developers utilize to create affordable housing, those programs all saw a boost in what they're getting. I'm not aware of there being any particular grants that like the municipality would be able to go to, that we would be able to apply for in order to fund the trust. But I do think that developers looking to create affordable housing are going to be able to hopefully move through the development timeline a little faster because they have more funds to give out at the state level. I just don't know how much of that will trickle directly into our trust. But what I do imagine is that it will result in, hopefully, the gap that projects will have being manageable, that our trust could contribute funds to and make a difference with.
Okay, great. Thank you for the answer. So even like this trust fund might not benefit directly, but through the developers, they might get some funding that, through the city collecting fees and so forth, it might, the fees might come from part of the housing bill fund to benefit this trust, the trust pool. The other questions that I have? The other questions that I have, you know, this is much better direction than the meeting we had done on the first one, so we do have an ask, we do have a goal for this meeting, and one of it is to ask the timeline that you recommend, you know, you're asking us to come up with a recommendation to the full council to have a public hearing, to have the council vote, and you put some dates next to it. Are these dates connected to any event that, like deadline, like hot deadline, that we need to get something done by? Or is it just like suggesting just to keep this moving along? Because I'm thinking maybe there could be, you know, just my question on the housing bill, if it was available, that we have, we need something in place so we could, you know, get the money that are available out there. So this timeframe, are they linked to anything?
No, Counselor, these, this is a suggested timeline based on what I would say is the straightest path, meaning the, these dates coincide with all of the next council dates. We're still on the summer schedule, and so in order to bring this forward using each available council meeting and meeting the requirement of the advertisement period for public hearings, this would be the fast track. You know, it's certainly the will of the subcommittee and the will of the city council as to the pace at which we progress, but this would represent the most expeditious path forward to creating the trust.
Okay, thank you, Mr. CFO, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving this opportunity. Like I said before, it's a great proposal, it's a great program that we're doing. If the chairman want to ask one of us to make this recommendation to the full council, I'd be happy to make it or second it, but when we present this to the council, like I mentioned before, if you can come up with the amount of value, even estimate from the ARPA funding, that you're thinking about using it to fund this program, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chow. It is my intention and the intention of this subcommittee to send this proposal along to the full bodies because it is critical, and it's the timing is really right to go along what Counselor Chow was talking about, the housing bill. So I want to see that this Affordable Housing Trust is in place, in case all the money from the housing bill come, we are ready to benefit from that. So I would ask the member to entertain, Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So also, Assistant City Managers Joe Wani, Baez-Rose as well, the 10% that you would normally get from the CPC, CPA for the housing, give us approximation when the full council were to vote on it, as well as in term of, you know, per year, you know, the 10% for housing, right?
I apologize, if you might ask that one more time?
What is the approximate amount that CPA would allocate?
95,000, for housing would be?
To housing.
10% would be 95,000, that would be the minimum.
Those amount may be given to the full council as they vote on it, and same as the ARPA money, okay? I know you have the ballpark, there's no question. I know it's in 1 million or less, but that's a good amount to start off as seed. So I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, a motion to request the city manager have the law department prepare a necessary vote and ordinance for the full city council to establish low Affordable Housing Trust Fund and a linkage fee ordinance to provide funding for the trust fund.
So we'll bring this to the, recommend to the council to have the law department prepare, right? So I second that.
Yes, okay. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Yehm.
Here, I mean, yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
He's not on the subcommittee, so.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, did you get the full language of the motion?
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay, awesome, thank you, sir. If no members have any question, let's move forward to the acre. The zoning changes of the acre of the two parcel that was proposed at the last meeting, but I would like to just bring to the subcommittee, Housing Subcommittee, to allow us to learn a bit more, because this acre project was developed, the acre urban revitalization and development plan was voted by the council dated June 8, 1999, before any one of us were on the council. So if you kindly, Mr. Baez-Rose, to give us kind of overview, and then goes straight to the proposed lot that you want to make the changes, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. So as I mentioned before, I'm joined in the chamber by Deputy Director Camilo Espatia and Urban Renewal Project Manager Jorge Martinez. So the acre urban renewal plan, as you said, originally was passed, adopted in the '90s. There have been a number of projects that were successfully completed, and there's still some work to do. And so a part of what we're hoping the subcommittee will recommend to the council is to approve a zoning change that we're seeking on a particular parcel within the acre urban renewal plan. Jorge and Camilo are prepared to walk the subcommittee and folks watching at home through some background of the plan, some information about some of the successes that we've had. It's a plan that's been in play for a really long time, and there have been a number of projects that we've been able to complete, but there's more to do. And so we want to give you a little bit of that background, recognize the things that we have done, and then tell you a little bit more about what we're hoping to accomplish with this zoning change. So I'll toss it over to Camilo and Jorge.
Thank you, Joe Wani, and good evening, members of the subcommittee. Thank you so much for having us here. Before we even dive into the details of this, and I'll be really quick, this motion about having this presentation for an update on the urban renewal plan could not have come at a better time because we actually spent a good time of the spring, a good chunk of the time of the spring, revisiting all of our urban renewal plans and thinking about what is still relevant today, what is not relevant anymore, what have we accomplished, and more importantly, trying to understand how these different urban renewal plans that we have in the area can talk to each other. And so in revisiting these, that's when we start trying to understand what are the things that we haven't done and what should we be moving forward, hence the previous item in the agenda of rezoning this parcel of land. And just to keep some, before he goes into the detail of the backgrounds, the overall objectives of this plan were the creation of housing. Obviously, there were economic development goals, but an important one was the utilization of parcels that were underused. And so some of those things are still relevant today, and as we look towards the future for specifically the acre, there are opportunities, and one of them is the 268 Mount Vernon site. And so with that said, I'll let Jorge explain a little bit why we're asking for that change and to get us up to the speed of where we are with that urban renewal plan.
Good evening, everyone. I think in order to fully understand the acre plan and the acre neighborhood as a whole, you need to really backtrack to its origins. The acre plan area was initially described in a comprehensive plan from 1972 as suffering from blight, economic delay, social issues, and other problems. While many of the broader citywide improvements outlined in the 1972 plan were completed, development within what is now the acre urban renewal area remains stagnant, leading the city to seek urban renewal status through DHCD at the time in the year 2000. With this designation and the opportunities that come with it, the city implemented significant changes, transforming the area into a model of affordable housing redevelopment within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Despite these successes, there are still some elements of the original acre plan. They need to be reassessed, given the current conditions here in 2024, which is what we're gonna dive into in the following slide. The original acre plan outlined a vision with 14 specific actions designed to shape the future of the area. Of these 14, 10 have been completed. I won't go action by action because you have the full list in front of you, but some of the notable actions that have been completed are the Stockloso Middle School, which was completed in October of 2005, the rehabilitation of the city barn site, which was completed in 2001, various institutional spaces along Werthen, Dutton, and Dummer Streets that were completed at various different times, and the completion of Western Ave Studios, which was also completed in a couple different stages. Although the city has made significant progress within the acre renewable, excuse me, acre urban renewal area, there remains an opportunity to leverage the goals, objectives, and some of the outstanding actions from the acre plan to further advance the acre neighborhood into the future. And with that, I'll give it back to Camilo.
Thank you very much for a brief overview, and if you could update us on the current proposal of these two parcel that was being proposed two weeks ago, and then we want to know what the reason for changing from one zoning to the next.
Awesome. I think that's what Camilo's gonna dive into in the next slide.
Thank you so much. So back in 2020, DPD was responding to an opportunity to meet one of the goals, which was economic development. And so we decided to rezone a portion of those parcels that are owned by the city for a possible implementation of an industrial manufacturing company that would make use of this plot of land. Unfortunately, that never came to fruition. So basically, what we're trying to do is go back to what it was before that, which is putting it back to UMS, which is Urban Multifamily. And if you wanna go to the next slide, please. Oof, it's a little small, but what you're seeing there is these two lots that the city owns. Combined, they're around 66,000 square feet, that would give you between 50 and 60 units, depending on how you break down the unit count. And so this is a perfect opportunity to respond to two things. One, obviously, the necessity of housing that we have in the city, as we all know, but two, better respond to what the context is. You know, originally thinking about an industrial company made sense for the economic development goals, but not so much for the built environment that's adjacent to the sites. And so we're thinking that what makes the most sense and what's more beneficial for the community is to zone this back to residential with the zone that was there before to respond to the context that's there and allowing us to also provide the units that we are looking for.
Thank you so much for the update. Any question from the members?
No, thanks so much again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for putting this on the agenda for discussion. Now, the acre, it's wonderful to see, you know, it's dated back, this project, this development vision has been going on for a while, and I'm glad that it's been brought back to the forefront of the current council again. It's, things about time. I grew up in acre, I think it was pretty stagnant in the 1980s and early 90s, and the 14 action points that you mentioned, I've actually seen it develop, I've seen it grow, and the impact it has had in that community and the city as a whole. That said, you know, this is a very ambitious plan you have. What is the expectation for tonight's meeting? Is this just for information? What are the ask from the council?
For the next, for the next council, ideally, that goes to the actual vote to change the zone. That's what we had in the previous agenda, but it was submitted to the subcommittee, so we're just hoping that next time around, we just simply, through the recommendation of the subcommittee, to actually vote for this change to happen. That's the goal for next agenda.
Thank you. I, any more? Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So do we have any interest developers in this parcel?
I mean, there obviously, throughout the city and parcels that we have, that we all know necessarily here in this parcel, we hear of only interest in residential development, so we're figuring that once we rezone this back to residential, we're gonna hear more from people willing to develop in the city. So this just becomes one more opportunity for, to hear from somebody else to develop units in the city, specifically in this area. So we don't have anybody in specific yet.
This is city-owned lot, right?
This is city-owned lot, correct.
Would you come back to us when you have a developer's interest in this?
Absolutely.
With their plan?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Again, any other question from members? If I would have any members entertaining a motion to send this to the law department, or do we need to go to the law department to change it? So, because I want to move this forward. I know the parcel really well, and I live in the area, and I've seen the parcel, and I understand the city changed to LI in order to have a commercial development, but it never materialized, and now the city would like to change that back to the original UML, Urban Multifamily. So I would like to have this sent to the full bodies for approval of the changes because it's, it just revert back to the original. Is that a language that we need to, that we need to put, Mr. Clerk? What would be the perfect language for us to send this to the full bodies?
Wasn't this on the agenda before, and we just didn't get to it the last time?
Yes.
It was referred to the subcommittee, so we have the language from law already on the vote. We could just have it, I guess, brought back to the full subcommittee with a positive recommendation.
Do we need to make another motion, Mr. Clerk, or is it?
I believe that if the law department has it up there as a change of zoning, they're at their preview, they can bring it down. This meeting, we can send it along its way. It's gotta go to a public hearing, but it also has to go to the planning board as well.
Okay.
Correct.
It was on the agenda two weeks ago, but I was the one that really kind of hijacked it and bring it back to the, to the subcommittee because I want to be, to hear an update since the plan was adopted back in June of 1999 before I was on the council. So that's what I like to do, and then now it go back to the full council. So we can make the similar motion, Counsel Noon, with just similar language, right?
Would, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Chairman, was it just, would a motion to bring it back to the council for a vote? Does it need to be a motion?
Yeah, the motion would be have the law department place on the agenda, an ordinance to amend the zoning for the Mount Vernon parcel.
Put it back on the agenda.
I can make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Yehm.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Two years.
Yes.
Okay, again, I want to thank you for putting this together, and I'm excited, particularly the Affordable Housing Trust. I know it's near and dear to Counselor Noon and I, so I'm happy that he took that leadership, and we all very happy. And this is what needed, as you stated, that city of Lowell behind on a number of housing unit that needed for the growing population of the city of Lowell. So any motion to adjourn for any members?
For adjourn?
Second. Okay, all in favor, that meeting is adjourned. Thank you for all who.